All right, good evening. Going to call this February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, business meeting to order. I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Dr. Campley.
Here.
Mr. Dorr.
Here.
Mrs. Evans-Brockett.
Here.
Mr. Fountain.
Here.
Mr. Keenan.
Here.
Dr. Kohler.
Here.
Mrs. Mares.
Here.
Mr. Saylor.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mission of the Perkiuman Valley School District is to cultivate an inclusive community of learners empowered to grow intellectually, socially, and emotionally. All right, looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Is there a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approved, nay. Motion passes. I'm going to hand the floor over to Mrs. Mares for a special presentation.
Thank you. Tonight, Dr. Russell and Mr. Ganesh will be showcasing the Viking Genius Bar and Mr. Ganesh will be talking about exploring the possibility of esports. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. So today we'll be presenting on two topics. First, we want to highlight some of the exciting things that's happening in the Viking Genius Bar course. It's only been two years since we launched this course and already the outcomes that's coming out of this course is very, very pleasing. Mr. Pennybacker and a few of his students are here to share their experiences. And secondly, we also want to be talking about launching, the possibilities of launching esports at the high school. I've been working with Mr. Height and his Nova Lab students and Mr. Height will go over, will give us an overview and also discuss our plans. We'll be happy to answer any of your questions after those presentations. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Dan Pennybacker. I teach computer science at the high school. And this is another unique thing that I think Perkiuman Valley has to offer. So the Viking Genius Bar, VGB, it was started really with Mr. Ganesh saying this is a really neat opportunity for students to be our IT department. They service over fifty-three hundred different devices. And they not only focus on computer hardware, they also do customer service. So when there's a problem, they can interact with students and staff. And they provide basic troubleshooting. The classic is, have you turned it off? Try it, turn it back on. But no, our geniuses can handle pretty much any of the repairs that are in there. We also have technology-based interest projects. We call them passion projects. And I'd like to talk a little about those in a couple of minutes. And we also do a bunch of next-gen technology. We have a fleet of drones. And we're exploring using 3D printing and some augmented reality stuff as well. So it's currently a one-year credit course. So it is actually a course kids do get credit for. It's offered to tenth, eleventh, and twelfth graders. And it does satisfy the technology elective requirement that we have. So, passion projects. So the biggest thing that I focus on is the passion projects. It's a loosely structured program in that students get a choice of what they want to work on. If they can't find something to do, I help them find it. But most of the students are incredibly, incredibly devoted to it. They can work in individual or group. They can work with me on items. They can work on really kind of anything that they think is interesting. There's a wide variety of how they show what they're learning. And one of the, two of the individuals from tonight are here. So Brad Kersey and Brad Kramer, come on, let me, I'm sorry, Brady Kramer. Come on down and I'd like you guys to explain what you guys are working on, which I think you work on more than any other thing. Yeah, cool. All right, this is Brad. So Brad, tell us a little bit about Viking Genius Bar.
My name is Brad. I'm a senior here at PV. And last year around course selection time was when my counselor at the time had suggested that I sign up for the Genius Bar. And I could say that my only regret then was not signing up sooner. And Genius Bar has not only given me the opportunity and the time to succeed in the class, but also to extend past the classroom and work on things that I want to do with my life. And we're actually working on the iOS app for the Ski and Snowboard Club that Brady can tell you about now.
Yeah, so in the Genius Bar, we, I had this opportunity to be able to combine two of my favorite interests outside of school, both skiing and coding and computers. So we noticed a few different problems with like the ski club signup process and the notifications and the calendar. And we all wanted to integrate it into one app instead of all these different websites that people had to use to sign up and to see the current events and things like that. And so we were able to put it all into one app and we're working on that right now. And it's actually something that could be scalable to other clubs too, like intramural sports and things like that. And so we're trying to make this like a platform that we're able to put any kind of club into and make it more easy and accessible for students to both sign up for and participate in. So, yeah.
All right, and then, so past the passion projects, so back into the Genius Bar. We also have some students that are so good that they actually are interning with the tech department. So they spend a few afternoons with us as well. And that is Josh. So Josh, come on down. So Josh is our, I think I can call you lead genius, right?
Sure.
So can you tell us what you do in the Genius Bar?
So in the Genius Bar, during class, I help the lead IT technicians in helping the students if they have any questions with repairing the Chromebooks. And then I also repair Chromebooks a little bit myself. That involves like first checking out, like making sure to see that the problem is actually there. And then once I figure out what the problem is and that is actually there, then like repairing what needs to be repaired.
Great. Thanks, Josh. So Josh, how long does it take you to do like a screen repair?
It'd probably take me like, probably forty minutes to repair a Chromebook screen.
That's, that's pretty, that's incredible. So I mean, they can literally repair anything on those Chromebooks, from broken keys to anything. What's, what's your least favorite thing to repair?
My least favorite thing to repair is probably the mother, I mean, sorry, the system board that, because that involves me having to change the serial number on the system board, which is a very long process.
All right, next slide. Great. So I highlighted the tech repairs. I highlighted the passion projects. We're also working on some district projects as well. So we're looking to livestream some more of the district sports and events. We're also, we also did the Middle School East, the twenty-five drone. That was the twenty-five celebration. It was like the twenty-five that was out on the letters. We had our drone pilot take care of that. And we also have them working on a Welcome to PVSD promotional video that we want to host onto the website. So they have drone footage from most of the schools now and they're interviewing students and creating a promotional video to show how amazing PV is. Next slide. Great. So our whole goal with this was to expand learning opportunities. This has been a really amazing partnership. I feel like it's different than any other course that we have here at PV because it's not just a teacher telling the kids more and more and more information. Our technology department does a fantastic job of interacting with the students. I can't say enough good thing about Mr. Ganesh and his team. They've really, really kind of gone past what their, their role as technology support has been. The students, I think, look up to them. They provide really, really fantastic inspiration and a positive foundation. And then we'd love to expand our hardware repair services. Mr. Ganesh has quite a lot of ideas on how to repair for not just us, but to other organizations as well. It's, we're looking at, or possibly looking at maybe introducing it, repair services for other districts that utilize Chromebooks. And then our latest endeavor is we would love to launch an esports team inside of PV. So this is something that Mr. Ganesh and I have been talking about for the last year or so. And it seems like it's coming into a reality. So I'll let Mr. Height take that portion. He's a much better public speaker than I am. So take it away, Mr. Height.
I'll put my public speaker voice on now. Great. So a minute and sixteen of this video, I think, would be a good place for us to start. So if you could just take a look at this for about a minute and sixteen seconds.
We are seeing an uptick in attendance problems at our school.
With forty percent of kids saying they hate school, we have to find a way in education to bring those kids to school. We got to figure out a way to make them enjoy it, at least just for a little bit.
The gaming concepts curriculum for me as an administrator is so powerful. It's such a powerful tool.
We teach gaming concepts in all of our high schools.
Gaming concepts encompasses a lot of different avenues of what we'd call soft skills.
What we're trying to do is teach kids how to learn.
Some kids have never had success in school. You put them in front of a video game, they find success. Now I have a voice. Now people are listening to me.
I think people think we're teaching video games.
Right.
And that is absolutely not what we're doing. We are using video games as the hook and we're meeting kids where they're at.
We often talk about right now in education, how we want to do things that prepare kids for a world, for jobs that are, haven't even been created yet.
Gaming Concepts offers the way to get to these different types of careers through community, collaboration, teamwork.
A lot of these kids we're reaching that we've never had.
A lot of times these kids come to school and they don't have a why. And you have to have a why to come to school and, you know, you're not-
Stop it there. Thank you. You have to have a why to come to school. If you were like me, back in nineteen eighty-six, my why for coming to school was I played soccer. I was student council president. I had a lot of friends here. And there were a couple of teachers I couldn't wait to see every day. Yeah, and there were classes that I took, but they weren't the main reason why I came to school. And I think things have changed, right? I'm reminded of a quote that comes from the Hebrew. It goes something like, "Do not confine your children to your own learning, for they were born in a different time." Certainly chronologically, if we do the math, nineteen eighty-six to twenty-twenty-three is a long time. But within that time, something else has happened. Technology has shaped and pulled and twisted that time in ways that we could not ever have imagined. The rise of the semiconductor, the microchip, the iPhone, the very computers sitting in front of you, the computers that students are using to play esports. None of these things could have been foreseen. And so, yeah, it is a different time and we have to consider what that might look like. Can we click there? Thank you. So this is why esports. Because in this time, it, this is like, it's here. Over two hundred colleges and universities currently offer up to fifteen million dollars worth of scholarships for high school students for esports. Seventy percent of K to twelve schools are now considering introducing competitive gaming techniques into their curriculum, not just extracurricularly, into their curriculum. Fifty-six percent, when they do this, see academic improvement. Forty-one percent found increased participation by students and recruitment of those students. And twenty percent, top esport athletes attract scholarships to national colleges. Can we click again? There's a lot of words up here. I'm only going to focus on the eighty percent in the upper right-hand corner. Eighty percent of esports student athletes are first-time participants in extracurricular activities. Here's what we know, I think, about the importance of extracurricular activities. They are probably the number one reason why a lot of students actually come and stay in school. But you don't have to take my word for that. In twenty nineteen, Hal Mehta and Sarah Fine wrote a book called In Search of Deeper Learning. And in this book, they were looking to think about how might we reshape the American high school? How might we reimagine what the American high school is about? And what they were looking for were experiences that are characterized by deeper learning. Learning that pulls students in, that holds them there, lingering at a point of wonder driven by curiosity, the engine of learning. And what they actually found was that in all the schools they went to, the majority of the spaces where this learning was occurring were in extracurriculars. Esports, as you can see, is huge for many students who never participated in extracurriculars. One point seven percent increase in average GPA for those students and ten percent improvement in school attendance. All the other things that are up here, I'm going to let you hear from a student who actually embodies all these things. So if we could click to the next one. So extracurriculars is really obviously important to me. It's one of the reasons why, back in twenty sixteen, a student named Mitch Stommel came to me and said, hey, Mr. Height, robotics is really cool. I said, yeah, I like robots. I watch BattleBots. Let's start a robotics team. And so Mitch did that. And I helped him with that. And now you have robotics team. Nova Lab, the class that I teach, is not an extracurricular, but it is a space for inspiration, aspiration, respiration, and creation. And those are four things that I think are at the heart of why students do extracurricular activities. And those are the things that really drive deeper learning. So the benefits of esports, we saw why esports, benefits are all about the intrinsic motivation. And if you take a look at just those white circles, students who benefit or who participate in esports, I think, are really prepared for a world that is, or has been characterized by the War College out in Gettysburg, once characterized the modern world as a VUCA world. That is, it is volatile, uncertain, complex, and ambiguous. And within that world, we need students who are able to navigate that space. They're also probably going to be the same kind of people who will be able to craft a space and hold that space against the onslaught of AI. And I think we all know that that's coming too. So how do we create spaces where the human still is retained and, you know, works with the computer rather than for the computer? Not that I'm trying to raise any specters of Terminators or Skynet or anything like that. But I think when you look at strategists, content creators, entrepreneurs, organizers, if we can say that those kind of people can come because of esports, then those are the kind of people that I want to help bring into that space. But we don't just have to imagine those people because we actually have one of those people right here. I'm going to bring up Ethan Paperno right now. Ethan has done a lot of esports, more than I knew, just a couple of weeks ago. So he is in Nova Lab. He's been working with Karthik, myself, and some other students. And I'll let him talk a little bit more.
Hello, I'm Ethan. I'm a senior at the high school and I've been playing professional or competitive video games for a little over five years now. And I hope to make it my job, be a professional gamer. So this esports club will be really important to me. As Mr. Height said, there's a ton of benefits to esports and I see all of them basically every day when I'm practicing. I play on a team, so there's community there. We work together. I see, communication is a key part. And a lot of people associate with video games as being antisocial. But really I see the opposite because a lot of the video games bring people together on a team as a community. And I really like that aspect of it because it's a lot of working together and a lot of growing together. And something that would be really important to me would be to bring that into the high school and build a community here, which I think is really cool. And something that I think is even better is preparing people for college because we actually got to visit Arcadia, which has a huge esports program in the area. And if we can click, you can see pictures. So this is from our visit to Arcadia. We went there, we met the director, Bill, with the former student, Aiden, and we got to talk about why esports is so big and how they set it up and everything. And the biggest thing that Bill had to say was that he wished more high schools had esports. He wished that there was an outlet because it's a growing field. There's more like interest in it every single day. And he just wished that more people had the opportunity in high school to join in on the esports team. And as you can see here, the scale is absolutely gigantic at Arcadia. They have fifty-something computers. And we're not hoping to build something that large, but starting a community here, like a community there, would be huge for us. And so, oh, sorry. And so this is an example of LaSalle, which is a high school in the area. And it's a transformation of how they created their esports program here. And it's working with a smaller space that we have planned here. So it's just an example of what we hope to transform here at the high school.
Wow, that was great. Let's talk across to the next slide. So here's our draft plan. If all goes well, we would like to launch esports as a club, after-school club, starting this fall, which means that we'll have to start working on this in March. And we're already in conversation with the high school administration to identify a space where we can, we can have these computers. We can have these students interested in esports come and practice. And we're also exploring funding opportunities with organizations, district administration, and stuff like that. So that's, that's our plan. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
How many students went, or did any students go to Arcadia with you guys or just?
Yeah, so just Ethan. Ethan, myself, Mrs. Smith, and Mr. Height went to Arcadia. And we had planned to go to a couple of other schools as well, but Arcadia was the first one.
I ask Ethan a question?
Sure.
The kids that you play with, are they nationally or is it just in Pennsylvania or is it kind of all over the place?
So the team that I play with is all nationally. They're all in America right now and they're all around my A group. They're all going to college or searching for a college to go to. So.
Awesome. Very cool.
So what type of costs are involved in starting an esports club?
So the students already did some awesome research on that and see what would be involved. It would involve maybe like eight to ten computers, which are high-powered. It's about two thousand dollars each. We would need a dedicated space, some chairs, comfortable chairs, mice keyboard, some basic stuff. So we could, I'm just throwing some numbers out here. We could potentially launch this for about thirty thousand dollars with about ten workstations in a dedicated space. We could potentially launch this for about $30,000 with about 10 workstations in a dedicated space that we can set up ourselves. We don't have to purchase equipment from outside. We can, for example, the Genius Bar, we painted the Genius Bar ourselves. The summer interns painted the Genius Bar. So we could do something like that. And for probably about $30,000, we could have esports launched here.
The slide that was up said there was $200 million in grants for universities. Are there any grant opportunities for K-12?
Absolutely. So there are many video game companies that are partnering with the school districts. For example, Springfield, we were in one of those esports seminars and I was sitting next to a Springfield person and she was saying she had partnered with the college and also another video game company that's kind of giving them monies. And she has now, she's gotten these funds, she's gotten this motivation from the administrators to launch esports. So we are exploring that. But again, I think we're a little late to the game. There's many districts around us launching esports already. But that's one of the points for us to explore, funding opportunities.
I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation and for all aspects of it. I think this was maybe the best presentation that was ever put out to the board. Mr. Height really killed it. But I wanted to also thank the students for coming out and speaking to their experiences. And I just wanted to also impress that, press upon on them that I am very proud that this exists in our high school and for our students. This is the exact type of experience and lifelong learning foundation that all of our students should be afforded. And it's not measurable. And I think that that's probably the most important piece of it is that, you know, the experiences that they're able to gain from classes and from opportunities like these are not something that we could put in a data point and measure. So I think that that is really paramount. And it's really remarkable that the success that they're able to actually take with them into their lives is started here. So I guess then, based on all of that, what would we need to do in terms of putting this forward and moving it along?
As I said, we are working with, you know, for example, we're going to go to the foundation next to see if there's any money, grant opportunities available there. And then work with curriculum to see if there's any monies available. So we're going to explore these avenues and then possibly even look at some sponsorship to our, from our community organizations and see what monies can be available. And if there's anything short, then we'll have to work with the business officer, Dr. Russell, to see if any monies can be allotted. So we're trying to launch, I mean, we're trying to, would love to have this thing up and running for the fall. So we're already starting to take all those steps.
So you mentioned March, so that would be something that you could work on.
When I said March, we're going to start working on, you know, maybe like.
A curricular, okay, gotcha.
Right.
So yes, thank you for the presentation. How many students do you envision would be interested in taking part of this? Would be my first question. And then I don't know anything about esports. So what exactly is it that they're doing? What would that look like? And why do we, why do you think that GPAs go up? And so I'm just trying to understand because I would see it as a gaming. So I just want to understand what more is involved to the esports program.
So why GPAs go up, that's probably Mrs. Smith's area or Mr. Height's area. I can probably have one of the students answer that question.
Ethan wants to answer.
I just have some things to say. I don't know if you want to.
You can.
Okay. So as for like what you're doing in esports, so I would think of it more closely to a sports team. So a lot of the games are going to be five people on a team working together to achieve a common goal. A lot of them have different goals. So for example, a game like Rocket League, it's exactly like soccer, but with cars. So you're working together with your teammates to score a goal, just like you would in soccer. And you have to have strategies and planning beforehand to be able to better execute those in-game. And then there's a lot of tournaments where you can compete. And so you practice together and then you go into compete, just like any other sport. And I think, I can't exactly speak exactly on the GPAs, but for me, having a space outside of school to be able to share this with people because right now, I mean, I have some friends that play games, but it's really just the team that I play with. So having a place here with like the people that I know and I can interact with in person as well as in-game and work together would be something like a definite boost for me.
So when you're playing a game, are you, do you have headphones on? Are you talking to your teammates while you're playing a game or do you talk to the other team?
So communication is definitely important. I do have headphones on and I'm talking to my teammates the entire time. So that's like one of the big things, just like any other sport, how you communicate with your team.
My thought process is, just like any of the other extracurricular activities, you have to have your grades in good standing in order to participate. So if you're motivated to come to school because you want to participate in esports or any club or activity, you're going to keep your grades up. So I think right there is motivation. And then I think some of the, it sounds like some of these games you're talking about are kind of logic-based and thought-based. So then that's really that higher-level abstract critical thinking skills that you're utilizing when you're playing these games, which again, as Ms. White said, is that's an immeasurable piece as far as you're being able to expand your thinking and grow your thinking in a way that is just not typical when you're doing, you know, your typical textbook social studies lesson where you have to have X, Y, and Z facts. You're able to go and expand beyond. So I think I can definitely see how it would connect to greater academic benefits.
If there's information by the National Federation of State Schools and High School Associations that if the administration could get that out to the school board that has a lot of information on esports and answers specifically your question on why there's a differential in student enthusiasm and student GPA?
And I think it's mentioned in the slides. Dr. Russell, if you can go back two slides, I think they might have some.
Keep going. One more. Yeah. One more. There you go. The real-world experience. Ethan, when did you start? How old were you?
Like just playing video games, I played Mario on my Wii when I was five.
Yeah, no, I mean like esports.
I started esports in 2018 when I got my computer, so.
I was playing Zelda, so it was a little different when I was five, but.
Yeah, so I've been on multiple different teams across different levels of competition. And now I'm at the very highest. I'm ranked 150 in the world, so.
So when we went to Arcadia, they were trying to steal them. They were trying, they were trying to recruit them.
They can have them next year.
And I think one of the things that was a little understated was the creativity and like the strategic planning and all the thinking that goes into it. Because it's not just, for me at least, the competitive side is not just going there and playing a game. You're also competing. So you have to create and think up new strategies like you would in any sport or anything like that. And you also have to problem solve during the game because not everything is going to be the same every time. So you have to work with your team to solve problems and create new solutions on the fly.
So Mr. Weaver can double-check me on this. So I think the most number of views for a Super Bowl was 2018, 108 million views, whatnot, right? The League of Legends is an esports game. And a few years back, when this League of Legends was played, the viewership was around 200 million viewers. So it is really, it is really expanding. The viewership for this game is really expanding. And I won't be surprised in a few years since it becomes a part of the Olympics.
And then do we know about how many students are interested in participating?
So just in my Nova class, Nova Lab class alone, I have at least five students that are willing to participate, which would be a full team. But we also hope to get a survey out there to like gauge the interest and everything, to understand like who is interested. But I know at least 10 or 12 people in here that play games and would love to be able to have a space to play them competitively.
And when we're doing the homework on this, at least half of the BGB class was interested in this as well. So I'm assuming like if you're going to put up eight to 10 stations, they would be, they'll be taken. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to public comment. Hold on one second. Makai Capers. Come on up. Makai, if you could just introduce yourself and what township. Perfect. Dr. Russell, do you want to?
I'm not sure, Mr. Saylor, if you'd like me to answer. Ms. Clements, I can call you tomorrow.
Capers.
Capers, I'm sorry. And I can call you tomorrow and we can discuss this. I would like to learn more from you in a conversation and then follow up with administration. And then I'll follow up with you once again. But we'll get to the bottom of this and understand it better. I will say that there are times in the event of an emergency where male security will announce themselves and enter a restroom of the opposite, of females. Now, that doesn't happen very often that there's an emergency. There has been at least one case this year, to my knowledge. But let me get more of that information and an understanding that I can communicate to you and share with you.
A couple months ago, in regards to an incident with several female students and racial name-calling, it has not been addressed. And I spoke to you before and explained to you, even at the middle school, every student that goes to this school should be treated fairly. It should not matter their color, their religion. They should be treated fairly. And that's not the case. It's a lot of racial name-calling that's being done. And nothing is being addressed. And that's not fair. Students come to school to learn and students come to school to feel safe. They shouldn't have to come to school wondering what the issue is going to be today. And it just seems like, I spoke to you about this when she was in middle school, not seeing this happening to Trinity, but no student should have to tolerate that. And it's still not being addressed. So I want to ask you what is going to be done? Because it's a lot of things that's going on that you have no awareness of until someone brings it to your attention. And I just feel like anything that's going on in any school district that you're the head of, you should know. So I just wanted to bring that up because it's not being addressed.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Capers. I appreciate you coming to the board meeting. Wade Weston.
Good evening, Wade Weston, Collegeville Borough.
Dr. Russell, I apologize. Hold on one second. Everyone will get an opportunity to speak. What I do is I call on the people who say yes. And then afterwards, we'll make an announcement to anyone that want to have an opportunity to speak. Dr. Weston, I apologize.
Can I have my time back just in case I need it?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
I'll go again, Wade Weston.
Wade, thank you. Wade Weston, Collegeville Borough. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I was reviewing the slides from last week's financial presentation and a couple of questions came to mind. I was looking at the slide showing the 2023-24 notes on budget expenditures. And I noticed there's an item there describing 16 new security positions being added for an addition to the budget of $1.4 million. It makes a note that this reduces spending on contract personnel by $400,000. It gives the appearance that we're spending $1.4 million to save .4 million, net addition to the budget of $1 million, which is a pretty significant add. And I'm assuming this is also an addition to the security presence in the schools. I did not see in the notes, nor have I heard in recent board meeting discussions, a description of the rationale for adding to our security presence in the schools. So I'm just wondering if at some point in one of the presentations, we could hear a little bit more about the rationale as to why these positions are necessary and why they're being added. I'm also very curious to know what kind of positions these are, what sort of security personnel we're bringing into the schools, and how these personnel will be deployed. I think these are important questions that the community would like to get a little bit more information about. And I'm sure you have answers for those and I'm looking forward to hearing about them at some time in the near future. And thank you very much. I didn't need those seconds after all. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make a public comment? Hold on one second. We'll go over here and then you'll be next. Go ahead, ma'am. Just when you come up, you'll have three minutes and just your name and what township, what borough you're in.
Okay, my name is Monique Lewis and I'm in East Winchville. And my daughter goes here to this school as well. Just to piggyback off of Makai, a lot of your students of color don't feel safe here. They don't feel safe. They don't feel like you guys care. And I really feel some type of way when my daughter come home with all of these stories, all of the racial slurs, the comments from the teachers even. I had a situation with her, what, earlier this year? Last year? Or earlier this year with a teacher making like racial derogatory remarks towards her. And I had to bring it to the attention of Mr. Marsh, who, he did address it, but I'm really not sure what happened to the teacher. But I would just like to bring more attention to that. Your students don't feel safe here.
Thank you very much for your comment. Ma'am.
Hi, I'm Betsy Stones, Get Back Township. I actually wanted to kind of piggyback off of Mr. Weston's comments about the additional million dollars, the appearance of the additional million dollars for security because I found it kind of interesting. And I was a criminal justice major at Penn State. And one of the things they teach us is criminality and who's going to commit crimes. And in the presentation from January 30th, there was a lot of discussion about the makeup of our student body and, you know, male to female. And over and over again, we see Mr. Weaver's reports, the nine-year projections for the district. Everything has our population going down. In addition, if you look at the report, the presentation from January 30th, our male-to-female population, male population is going down. If you want to look at criminality in any way, your biggest predictor of criminality is males. If you want to look at criminality in any way, your biggest predictor of criminality is males. Your population of males ages 15 to 24 in your geographic population. Those numbers are all going down. It is actually fairly safe to say that our, any issues in the building, you know, should be going down as well. And when you look at the breakdown of what's, of the various incidents in the building, of the 2,200, 2,000 were simple school conduct ones. Could be dress code, could be cheating, you know, they're teenagers. So I just think that if we're going to be spending an extra million dollars, maybe the best way to do it isn't with security, but maybe actually addressing the things behind it. Because when you also look at teens who commit crimes and vandalism, burglary, thinking, things like that, usually there's something else behind it as well. And perhaps something that was actually brought up when I sat in the equity meeting, we don't have anybody overseeing our mental health professionals in the school anymore. This is a position we used to have, which I just found out, and we don't have that. So there's no coordination of care for any of our students who have mental health issues. And that is more likely to also be a factor in certain criminal behavior. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make a public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll move on from public comment. I want to give an update to my president's report that I gave last week. I have, I had two things, but now I actually have three things based on the public comments that came out. And obviously, the school board was made aware that there was a social media post about the situation at middle school, at one of the middle schools. And we're hearing comments today from parents about situations that are happening in the school buildings. I've voiced my concern that we have a lack of discipline and a lack of holding students accountable concern recently, that actions are not being held accountable. And I hope that's something that the administration can look into. When a student's not, for lack of a better word, slapped on the wrist for their words, the words continue. I know for a fact that at the high school, there was a student last year given detention for barking at a student, and that student was wearing a towel and a hat. So that same type of behavior should also happen in the middle school. We have a bullying problem that, just my personal opinion, and I'm not speaking for any board member, comes from a lack of discipline and a lack of holding our youngest generational students accountable for their actions. Barking at a student, dropping racial slurs, touching another student, these are all unacceptable consequences that if a student's not put in the proper direction, will continue those actions. The other two things I wanted to talk about is when I first got elected to the school board through PSBA, I was interested in the school budget and what encompasses school budget. And what really racked my brain was that a large percent of our school budget was dedicated to public school employment retirement. And this year, it's now up to 35%. Through PSBA liaisons, I started conversations with Representative Sarisi and Webster, and then at the time, Representative Pennychuck. And throughout the past year, I've continued to have conversations with Representative Sarisi, and I received an absolute tremendous phone call today that he is putting forth a bill to take $1 billion of surplus in our Commonwealth and advocate for $750 million to the Public School Employment Retirement Fund and $250 million to the Pennsylvania State Employment Retirement Fund. This will, in a fair and equitable way, assist every single school district in the Commonwealth to reduce their PISA's budgetary item. For instance, we know today that if that bill passed, Pottstown, which has a very high PISA's rate, would receive in reduction over half a million savings per year at that early onset. This is something that I think all taxpayers can get behind, Republicans, Democrats. Knowing what a school board is, having a kid in school, it doesn't matter. We have an opportunity as a community to assist Representative Sarisi and the team that he's putting together to advocate for fair funding in our school districts, to reduce one of our largest budgetary items, which is the retirement funds. This is without touching the retirement funds as they are. I'm really excited to receive that phone call from Representative Sarisi. I'm looking forward to the memo that's being put out next week in Harrisburg. I'm looking forward to going to Harrisburg to talk to other members of our state and House legislature about this bill. And I hope that every taxpayer, every school board member, whether you're Republican, a Democrat, an independent, you don't choose to vote, this is a great way to help reduce our tax burden towards our school district and give the school districts a little bit more money to potentially play with or put aside into their surplus. The last thing I wanted to talk about is to let the community know that the board is considering safety and what it can do to decrease the likelihood of an incident inside the school district. The board has initiated conversations about implementing a school police force. However, these conversations do continue, and Dr. Russell has plans to discuss the ideas with the public between now and the end of the school year. And Dr. Russell, I know your plans are to send a message to the community out next week to let them know about some times and dates where there can be some conversations. I appreciate the support that the administration has with the consideration to take this up and look forward to the engagement in the public to talk about the advantages to students, to staff and our community in doing so. There are really strong models of school police forces around us, such as Springfield and Salderton, and their insights have been extremely helpful in all that we must consider when taking such an important step. With that, I did want to just go back to our student liaisons. I don't know if you have anything else to report from last week?
I don't know if it's what you're referencing, but the girls' basketball team is playing in the PAC Championships on Wednesday in our gym against Springfield. So show out here, 7:00 PM. We'll be here trying to dethrone Springfield. This is their sixth year in a row in the PAC Championship. They've won the last six, so I think this is the team that will beat them. And the boys were just seeded in districts, and they will get a bye. So that's kind of nice. They will start playing, I believe, next week. Mr. McKinney, am I right with that? Mr. McKinney's giving me a head shake, so yeah. And next week, the boys will start playing. And our wrestlers are going to districts as well, so everybody's, and swimming PAC, I have a lot. I'm sorry. I didn't write this down.
Yeah, I knew I did.
Yeah, yeah. Swimming PAC Championships went really well. I don't have the names off the top of my head, but we did have a few PAC Champions. Next meeting, I will have their names, I promise you. So yeah, our athletic section is doing very well.
And if you have a pass, it's no good for the playoffs, so you got to go on the link and buy it.
And somebody will post that link. I'm sure Mr. Felty will.
He did it today.
He did it today. There you go. Ahead of the game.
I can also add, Speech and Debate had a tournament at UPenn, and they did pretty well, yeah, last Saturday and Sunday.
There you go. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Dr. Russell, do you have anything? Mr. Schubert, do you have anything?
I do not.
Just want to reopen up. Does any board members have any comments or questions about board and district committee reports? Because I know I did. I had a question about the scoreboard. So the scoreboard, the scoreboard's currently set to be installed in March. But will we know from the township if we're allowed to advertise on the scoreboard? Because to me, a lot of people, like myself, include, I voted because we were able to have revenue on the scoreboard. And if that's an issue, I don't know if we should be installing the scoreboard before we find out if we're able to have revenue.
So when we approve the scoreboard, there is a possibility for additional revenue source, $20,000 to $30,000. We need to request a waiver from the township, and we have begun the legal process to do so, to advertise on the scoreboard. I think at the end of the day, it's not going to be an issue, but we have to go through certain legal processes. And we did not want to hold up the scoreboard construction, so we disconnected the two, pushed the construction through. We received the permits to do so. We will do that. We actually begin construction in the next couple of weeks. And then we continue to work on the legal process for a waiver associated with the advertising associated with that.
My concern would be, once it's constructed, and then the township comes back and says no, then we're kind of stuck. And I don't know what, how the board, rest of the board feels, but I'm just a little wary about that.
I'm not sure about the specifics, but I would imagine we've already committed to the purchase of the school board.
It's en route. And we approved that separately, yes.
So, and I'm not dealing directly with the township regarding the approval process, but we are reasonably optimistic that we'll secure approval for our ability to advertise.
Yes, we are working with Mr. Comer from Mr. Schubert's office.
Well, I know I asked this question. I didn't get necessarily an answer. I'm confused. If we purchased the scoreboard, did we know the scoreboard was going to be too big?
It has nothing to do with the size of the scoreboard. They approved that permit. It's going up.
So, but what's the issue with the scoreboard being 10 feet too big that we can't advertise?
It has, that's, this is an advertising ordinance within the township that we need to request a waiver of.
What are the odds that they don't give it to us?
In speaking with Dave Comer of my office again, I didn't, I mean, I'm monitoring it generally. My understanding is that he's reasonably, he's optimistic that we'll get it, that we'll get the waiver. Because one of the issues is the, how close it is to Route 29. And I mean, I think that's a non-issue. It was more of an issue for the baseball stadium sign, the football stadium sign, or school board, rather, being so much further remote from Route 29 gravel plate. We're not anticipating a problem, but we do have to go through the approval process.
I mean, wouldn't we have done that before? We voted on the scoreboard?
That's what I was going to ask, yeah.
Because the only, the conversations that happened back at the committee was that we're going to have this scoreboard and we're going to be able to advertise. And now we're being told that we're going to have the scoreboard. We already bought it. It's en route. And hopefully, we'll be able to advertise. That just, to me, seems a little bit... Yeah, go ahead.
So we had conversations about the scoreboard for several years running. And ultimately, when we decided about the approval of it, I know that there was a lot of pushback about the cost of the scoreboard in general. So ultimately, however, it was approved and ordered, just as Mr. Weaver said. The conversations as far as the advertising piece of the scoreboard and its componentry was never a deciding factor in any conversation that I can recollect. And Mr. Weaver, correct me if I'm wrong, there was going to be some advertising potential to help offset some of the cost, but there was never going to be a really, like a continuous revenue stream of profitability associated with the advertising. It was really more of just like a happy sort of thing, and we talked about who would be getting that revenue and all of those things. But in terms of the approval of the scoreboard, it, there was never a contingency associated or affiliated with the approval of the scoreboard being purchased and installed.
That's correct. I think when we solidified the St. Luke's contract, which guarantees $130,000 in sponsorship over three years, that was the final piece that really helped to offset the cost of the scoreboard moving forward. And I believe that's how we presented it. There will be, hopefully, presented in an optimistic manner through Mr. Comer's conversation, a revenue stream moving forward, somewhere between $20,000 to $30,000. That's based upon the sizes of the advertisements, about $5,000 apiece. There are six spaces on that scoreboard that we are planning to advertise. We just need that approval from the township to move forward with that.
And given the relationship that we have with the township in general, would you feel as though you're pretty confident that a waiver would be granted since it's a public school use and it would just benefit the overall good of the community?
Yeah, we have a really good working relationship with Perkyomen Township. They posed no issue whatsoever when we met with them the first time, associated with the size of the scoreboard or moving forward with the scoreboard. And, you know, that was not an issue. We have the permits in hand. This is another sequentially processed governmental thing that we need to move forward with because it's not just the school district within the township that they're concerned with. It's with everybody. So if the school district doesn't go through the waiver process and they change the ordinance, then basically, everybody can put up a sign and do whatever they want to do. So they're very cautious with the current ordinances that they have. We're going to go through the waiver process. We feel very optimistic that they will move forward with that and approve that.
So when did we find out about the waiver process? Because to my memory, well, this wasn't brought up. I do agree, yes, the 130, that was a huge, you worked really hard on that. We were very appreciative of that. But before that, I do remember just talking a lot about the ads, bringing in revenue. So I'm just wondering when in this conversation over the last couple of years, we knew and understood there was a waiver process that we would have to go through after the fact of...
So I can't recall exactly, but I do know we had the conversation about the baseball field signs about 10 years ago. And that was a whole waiver process that we went through then. I do know we talked about that. I do know that we cautioned that we had to go through the process at the time. You know, we can go back and look at the notes, but I do know we talked about that because the baseball field was our first foray associated with advertising in a public forum that the township demanded that we go through a waiver process. That was actually run by the baseball boosters at the time.
My recommendation would be, everybody can kind of go back, review their notes, review their recollection. But at the end of the day, we already voted. The sign is on its way. It's going in. So I think there was really no sense to kind of belabor things. We can review the notes and see what the meeting minutes said.
And I will update the district administration for forwarding to the board on the exact status of the process and the, our estimate of the probability of success of that action.
Any other discussions? Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Second, excuse me, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion's approved. Mr. Fattlin, education?
Section 4.01, Ms. Smith had given her presentation last week and had nothing additional to add to that from what she'd said earlier. 4.02, 03, and 04 are all on consent, and the enrollment report was just...
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
And the 4.05, the enrollment report was a report, so that would complete my section.
Ms. White, business?
5.01 was the committee meeting of the whole for finance. That was last week. 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 8, 9 are all on consent. There is a motion to approve, 5.07 is a motion to approve a food services consultant. The motion is to approve the consultant agreement with Gilbert Consulting LLC to provide technology consulting, consultation services for uploading nutritional guideline information on the district's website. It is at a cost not to exceed $4,000. This will be paid through food service funds, an ISO move.
Discussions? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
510, there's no report on grants or donations this month. And items 5.11 and 5.12 were removed from the agenda.
Payment of bills?
6.01 is a motion for ratification of bills and payroll and authorization of payments, an ISO move.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Professional personnel?
6.02.
Oops, sorry.
Motion to approve treasurer's report and financial statements, an ISO move.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Professional personnel?
Thank you. 701 through 705 are on consent. 706 is a new item. It's a motion to approve high school and middle school girls wrestling teams. Request to approve the addition of high school girls wrestling and middle school girls wrestling teams, pending agreement with PVEA on the additional co-curricular positions. Total cost to support them both would be projected at $15,000, an ISO move.
Second.
Multiple seconds. Any discussions? All seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Support personnel? Hmm?
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Dr. Campbell?
8.01 to 8.05, or sorry, 6 are all on consent. We do have a new item, 8.08, which is a motion to approve high school and middle school. school.
Discussions? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Governance?
Section 9.01, we have a first reading of the listed policies. Do you need me to read?
Nope.
What they are? And they are presented for a first reading.
Any discussions?
Ends my section.
All right, comments from the audience? Absolutely.
Hi, Trina Sadler, Gepack Township. So, you have resignations and retirements. Are any of those resignations and retirements related to teaching staff? Do you know? That's my first question. And then, what, what is, what type of strategies or what ways is the district going to try to replace those positions with a more diverse candidate? So my thought is, if we have teachers that we know that are resigning, let's look at creative ways to try to find diverse candidates to fill those positions so we can increase the diversity of our teaching staff, because we know that's an issue in our district. So that was my question and my thought in reference to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none. Any comments from any board members? Seeing none. 10.03 is a notice of video recording. I'm not going to read it, it's there for you all to read. I'm going to rule adjournment, and just note that the board had an executive session prior to the meeting for the purpose of safety. Have a good night.